I'd like to call and order the meeting for the mayor and city council for the month of March. Please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, the United States. Hands, one knee. Welcome, everyone. It's enjoyable to have a taste of spring today and to be able to walk to our council meeting in the light rather than in the dark.
That's always nice.
Warm and light.
Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes for the February 10th combined meeting. Does anyone care to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Who carried? My pen. Next we have the council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on the agenda items. Anybody have any conflicts tonight? Forgot to do the roll call. We're absent. I think the mayor's with us virtually. Councilwoman Cheney said she would try to join us virtually, but I don't see her on there yet, so I apologize.
She indicated that she'd be absent.
She had reached out. She advised the mayor she'd be absent.
She would be absent.
Yeah, she's not going to make it after all.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have a council member's statement regarding any conflicts of interest on the agenda items. Anybody have any conflict of interest? Nothing. We'll move on to resolution ordinances and agreements. Production tonight, we have ordinance 04-2025, stormwater management. Make a motion to introduce that ordinance. Second. Question. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Carry. The ordinance is 05-2025, speed monitoring systems. You found that document on the table when you came in. Jay, did you have any comments on this before we address it?
Mr. Protem, the city attorney reviewed this one for us today. The copy that you have is the version with those changes accepted. We still have some cleanup to do with it, though, so we're good to introduce it tonight, but we have some, a couple typos and formatting things that we didn't manage to clean up before this evening. So, just so you're aware, there's some flaws in there.
Someone care to introduce ordinance 05-2025?
I move to introduce ordinance 05-225, speed monitoring systems.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Right.
I would think that since you're functioning as the mayor this evening, I would guess you don't.
Correct. You can't vote from the presiding officer chair.
With the resolution 04A-2025, is Stubble's addition annexation. Anyone care to make a motion to introduce that resolution?
Motion to introduce resolution 04A-2025, Stubble's addition annexation.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Nothing with some non-approve. Move into adoption, ordinance 01-2025, water recharge ordinance. Care to make a motion to approve or to pass ordinance 01-2025?
Second.
Discussion. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Ordinance 02-2025 is the building construction fees. Make a motion to introduce the building construction fees ordinance.
The motion for adoption?
Is adoption.
Discussion.
I make the motion that we adopt ordinance 02-2025, amendment of the chapter 82 Building Construction Code.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve ordinance, building construction fees, ordinance 02-2025. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Have ordinance 03-2025, which is the fiscal year budget amendment number two. Motion to amend the budget.
Adopt ordinance 03-2025, fiscal year 2025, budget amendment number two.
Discussion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Right along. We have resolution 25-2025-03, which is the water allocation for March. Order allocation for March. Motion.
I move that we accept resolution 2025-03.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Carry. Next we have the city managers' report. Jim, what do you have for us this evening?
Nothing to add. There was a question about speed monitoring systems Wednesday, and that would be as far as like the cost to the city, and that really would be determined by the specific agreement that we would enter into with somebody once we have the enabling ordinance passed. So, the sample contract that we have from the vendor who presented has a couple different options for the fee structures, but so would all be dependent on the agreement we would enter with whoever we ended up choosing. But the idea would be that we would get a slice of that ticket revenue that would exceed any expense.
How many, or do, do you know how many vendors are out there that do this?
I do not. We haven't advertised or anything at this point.
Kind of dealing with one to get all the information and create the.
Do you have any questions for Jim? Okay, departmental reports. Anybody have any questions on the departmental reports? Nothing. We'll move into the legal report.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have anything more than what I offered at the work session. However, you know, we're going to have a legal session following this, so I will save my time and breath for that.
I had two questions of a general nature that I just wanted to ask. You know, we are about to close our nominations for city council, and that nominees are reviewed by the ethics board shortly thereafter, and I'm wondering if consideration will be given to the ethnic or the unusual situation we find ourselves in with the mayor's wife running for city council. Will that be addressed by the ethics commission?
They may talk about it, but when it is talked about, if it is talked about, we'll be giving them the advice that I've given to the staff is that the town does not have any prohibition on that, and without any specific prohibition or finding in the code, then there is constitutional right to run. It may create problems down the road because of potential collusion and issues of, I guess, issues that relate to the code of conduct, but probably not directly with the ethics ordinance itself, because the ethics ordinance deals with like a person's responsibility, not the government's responsibility.
What about, what about the fact that the mayor is appointing people to the ethics commission?
I see that on the agenda, and of course, the mayor's, under the ethics law, the mayor's spouse is considered an interested person for any financial disclosures, and the mayor's spouse would also be considered an interested person, and we use different words than that, but basically an interested persons in any actions that would be taken that would personally benefit him. As a candidate, she would be under the same rules. So, the question that you've asked is, does it affect appointment powers of the mayor? And likely it would not, because the appointment powers of the mayor aren't directly going to impact, although these people will oversee the ethics and the elections, they aren't directly impacting the mayor or his spouse.
Thank you.
Another question I had, I guess, is not a question for the ethics board, but certainly an ethical question. There is a legal campaign sign posted in the downtown area, and I'm just wondering what recourse the town has about violating this design ordinance and continuing to display that sign. Is that something we should pursue, or I mean, how do we deal with that?
I've given advice to the zoning administrator and city manager about the sign. I don't know what they passed on or what moving on. The issue with the sign, I guess, we related it to the ethics situation. And again, the ethics board doesn't necessarily deal with those types of zoning regulations. The ethics board would deal with the sign as far as its display and meeting the campaign finance rules, so I don't think it would be them. I think it would be the city itself, and an order would have to be passed by the zoning administrator, and then the order, if it's not complied with, would have to be taken to court. The issue and the opinion in general is this, that while everybody gets nervous when we talk about campaign signs, and they throw out First Amendment rights and rights to free speech and things like that, the reality with campaign signs is you can't treat them any different than you treat any other signs. So, you're not looking at the content of the sign. You're looking at, it's a sign. And so, the situation is, if a sign says yard sale, or a sign says vote for Joe, it's the same thing that the city regulates. And then the situation here, in discussing it with Mr. Hale, the sign that is, I think we're talking about, the big sign that's on the side of the building, exceeds the amount of square footage that a sign in the downtown zone can have, regardless of what is on it. And so, that's the violation. There's maybe secondary violations, which we could discuss about how many signs a property can have, and I think that would affect maybe the First Amendment rights. But you need to comply with the sign ordinance and the size, and that was what I had explained, and I do not know what happens after that. So, you all would need to do that, and we can talk more about that in closed session for legal advice if you want.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to chime in here. I know it hasn't been brought up, but again, we have sign restrictions on how far they, on how big they can be throughout the town. However, you know, we've seen campaigns from Commissioner Bigliotti, we've seen campaigns from myself, you know, I had four by six signs all over town. None of these issues have been brought before, none of this enforcement has been done before. So, to me, this seems pretty targeted, and, you know, I'll leave it at that.
Well, I guess that was talked about with the city manager, because he said in the past, we have not, we have not tried to regulate political signs. The issue you all have to decide is, if you're not doing something right, when do you start doing it right? Or do you always use the past as an example? And do you set the example? Because that's the issue, I guess, that really comes down to the common sense, is that everyone who is running for office wants to be in those chairs and is going to be responsible for doing the laws the way they are on the books. And if you don't like the way the laws are, you certainly can change them. I've told you that before, but that's the issue that we have. And of course, it brings in extra problems, which is, I guess, what was kind of talked about with the conflicts, is that, you know, this puts the mayor in an awkward situation as the head of the administrative body, who is in charge of doing this, and it's his slate and his wife on there. So, those are things that you're going to have to kind of navigate around. But to your question, Mayor Protem, what the city should do about that should probably be discussed in closed session.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll follow up again. You know, when I talk to staff as well, you know, it really comes down to this has never been enforced. If council really wants to enforce this on a candidate who is running, you know, to replace seats that are on that council that council currently sits on, you know, I won't go into how that would be perceived, but I think you guys can see what that looks like.
Well, I mean, again, a time for a debate is the other time. The reality of the situation is, the candidate we're talking about is your spouse and is your slate, and the situation is, how is it difficult for the employees to take care of this type of situation, and when do they do it? And what else can be done if we don't? And that's why I said it's a tricky issue that we should be talking about, to make sure that the letter of the law is followed, and if there's an interpretation of the law, then we can talk about that as well. But that's the issue that the council should be talking about in closed session, which then brings us to the issue of conflicts of interest, which I guess is where we started this, is that as your wife is a interested person, and therefore, you have an interested person status with her in her filings, the question is, should you be involved in this at all? And I think that was the question that we wrestled with on the staff, is how do you deal with this enforcement issue?
You would, you know, treat it like you have all the other elections. But again, you guys do you. Trust me, I don't want to be a part of your closed session. I don't need to be a part of your closed session. Continue.
Well, I think just so we're clear, the closed session isn't on that. The closed session is on a land use.
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking about in regards to, yeah, regards to the science stuff.
Okay, any further questions for Jay? Move into.
Hey, Dan. Sorry. Dan, are you still there? Councilmember Cheney was looking to see if she could come into the conference still.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, mayor. She would like.
Fine.
Roger that. I relayed that over.
Sorry, didn't catch that, mayor.
Council, I relayed over that. Councilmember Cheney, she's going to try to come into the meeting with her link now.
Okay. All right. Into new business. We have for approval the monthly financial report. We've reviewed. Care to make a motion to approve the financial report?
Motion to approve the monthly financial report.
Second. Is there any discussion? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Next, we have the accounts payable. Care to make a motion to approve the accounts payable for the month?
I move we accept the accounts payable report.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the accounts payable. Favor say aye?
Aye.
Like sign, so carry. Next, we have nominations for the ethics board and the board of elections. Who's going to address that?
The mayor has dropped off for a moment, so the nominations are Amanda Rankin for the Ethics Commission. Her application was circulated earlier today, and for the election board to return Bill Kennedy, to continue him with his service on the board of elections.
Right, so it's the nominees of Amanda Rankin for the Ethics Commission. Take these individually. All those, anyone might want to make a motion to approve Amanda Rankin for the Ethics Commission?
I, I move to accept Amanda Rankin for the Ethics Commission.
Is there a second? Second, motion failed. Anyone care to make a motion to approve Bill Kennedy election board?
Jim, one second. Jim, are you there?
Yes.
I'd like to withdraw my nomination for Bill Kennedy.
Draw the nomination for Bill Kennedy?
Yes.
All right, I guess that's proper. Nominations. Have anyone to replace? That'll be future date.
We'll work on that for a future date.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
How many times are we going to reject Mr. Kennedy? Second time.
Well, I'd like to hear some conversation regarding the no motion on the, or the no second on the first nomination.
Didn't get a second for the first nomination, so there was no discussion. Motion failed.
Yeah, that's fine. Again, I'm only, I'm only hearing clippings of what you guys are saying, but again, nomination's been withdrawn. We'll look to bring up further candidates in the future.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move into council member reports. All right, have anything for us?
Yes, I do. We've had a very busy month at the planning commission. We are continuing our work on the comprehensive plan update, and we had another very good meeting. Those meetings are on the third Tuesday of every month at 6:30, and I encourage anyone who wants to be involved in the planning process to attend that. We had a, like I said, we had a pretty good meeting. We've established a lot of background information. We are trying to move forward now with getting our visions, goals, plans, and objectives together on the, on the plan, to start really assembling the plan into its, into its final format and shape. So, that has, is a process that continues to move on. In the planning commission itself, we have a lot of things going on. A number of meetings occurred over the past month or so regarding various projects. Memorial Park expansion, we are still waiting for certain approvals from the state highway administration regarding the access to Frederick Street, and there are just some details regarding forestation and landscaping approvals. BAPCO is still moving ahead. They, they're expanding their building. They are going to be redoing, creating a new parking lot where the houses were taken down last year. Rating going on at Recovery 180. That site plan was approved last, almost a year ago. The preliminary site plan was presented for storage today. They've moved into that preliminary site plan phase and are going to move ahead. That's on York Street, out by Crane Masters. And other than that, the other thing that's going to be, going into people will see and notice is the addition of Tony Town Elementary School. There's a pre-K and kindergarten addition that's going to be starting probably in the next couple of months. That is currently out to bid. That's pretty much the bulk of it from the, from the planning commission.
Thank you.
I see Councilwoman Cheney, are you, are you on?
She was saying she's having issues. I'm muting right now.
Okay, would you like me to read her, read her report?
If you don't mind.
No problem. So, for the Tony Town Police Department, in-service and continuing education training, dog encounters for law enforcement. It was a two-line, two-hour online course that I believe all active officers took. We did have some specialized training. LinX user training was completed this month by Officers Darby, Beck, and Blaze. LinX is a database that collects and shares police information between participating law enforcement agencies. This database is used across the country and is a valuable tool. Sergeant Schultz completed the FBI LIDA Command Leadership Institute, which is a four-and-a-half-day program designed to prepare law enforcement leaders for command-level positions. In this month's statistical report, 384 total generated calls for service, 31 citations issued, 82 warnings issued, 12 adult arrests, and three juvenile arrests. On February 27th, Haley Ingles participated in a car seat inspection event that was held in Frederick County, and approximately 20 car seats were installed and distributed.
Congressman, our councilman congressman.
Pushing the sir.
One day, Monday. There's no really economic development report this evening in lieu of our meeting tomorrow. I'm looking forward to, or Wednesday, rather. I'm looking forward to a very productive meeting. I think we've all given this a lot of thought, and everybody has a lot of good ideas. I think we're pretty excited about how things will move forward in re-establishing our, our main street momentum and initiatives, so I'm looking forward to that on Wednesday night. Woman Foster.
Okay, the Department of Public Works, Monumental Paving has completed all the pipe work and manhole rehabilitation. During the last week of February, weather has allowed for paving work to start. Yard restoration has also been completed during the month. And I assume they had their final walkthrough. Also, the Westview Drive, a pre-construction meeting was held. Also, the Westview Drive, a pre-construction meeting was held in January, and within the next few months, the contractor will be in, as the weather permits them, to start prepping the area to get the project started. The work will include cutting of the road and installation of a few new valves to be able to isolate the construction area. And the roof has been completed, and all interior work from the water damage has been completed by the DPW staff for City Hall. And I'd just like to give kudos to the guys for laying such a beautiful floor in the corridor here.
Very nice.
It was really great.
Beautiful, they chose a beautiful floor for that.
Job well done, as usual. Okay, moving on to Habitat for Humanity. They are accepting applications for a home that has been rehabbed. They, this home isn't a new build, it's a home where someone moved and they rehabbed it, and they're accepting applications up until April the fourth. The home is located at one sixty-four South Court Street in Westminster. So if anyone is interested, please apply to Habitat for Humanity. Silver Oak Academy, I have a meeting later this week, so today I have no report.
Councilwoman Fuller.
All right, going back to DPW in helping us, we've, they planted four red maple trees at Flicking Park today. These twelve-inch tall trees were donated by DNR's Forest Service Division, and we'd like to thank them for their generosity. Finished coordinating the tennis clinics and yoga in the park for the summer. They're going to be running on various dates, so check the flyers on the Parks and Rec Facebook page and the website calendar for more details. We are still working on securing the funding for the movie licenses for the movies in the park, but hope to have these finalized in the next couple of weeks. Parks and Rec is scheduled to hold twenty-one events, three recreational programs, four contests, and an anticipated seven special events in our park this year, so there should be something for everyone. Our next event is going to be our Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April twelfth, and that's going to be from one to three P M. at Memorial Park. Our next Athletic Association and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting is going to be this Thursday, the thirteenth, starting at six thirty P M. And that is it.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
I got a couple statements before we go to closed session here. So, you know, one of the things I do want to say is, you know, I want to thank Amanda Rankin for putting in her application. And, you know, it is a shame that it didn't give a second, so there was at least a bait under why her nomination wasn't accepted or disapproved, because I will say that was rather cowardly of council. You know, other than that, that's the only statement I had to make. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at the end of our agenda, and we will entertain a motion to adjourn to go into a closed session. Make a motion to adjourn and then read this statement, or do I read the statement first?
Read the statement, I believe.
Right. Mayor and city council will adjourn this public meeting and go into a closed session. Authority in purpose, in accordance with Maryland Open Meetings Act Title Ten, Government Procedures, Subtitle Five, Meetings, Section Three dash three oh five B. This will be closed, this will be a closed session only to consult counsel and obtain legal advice. Following is a listing of topics to be discussed by the authority of the Open Meetings Act for having such discussion in closed sessions, and a citation to be applicable for the provisions of the act. Citation is three dash three oh five B is seven. The topic is developers' rights and responsibilities agreements, and the reason for the closed session discussion of the topic is to obtain legal advice pertaining pertaining to the negotiation of this agreement. Save a motion to hold a closed meeting. Anyone care to make that motion? Is there a second? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. We'll adjourn this public meeting at eight oh seven and resume at eight fifteen.